Good morning. Thank you for joining us for the study session today. Today is June 17 and it's 10 o'clock in the morning and I'd like to welcome the wonderful panel of people who I have in front of me. Thank you so much for being part of today's discussion. Just to start off, I do have one letter that needs to be read into the record before we commence. So I will read that now and then to Dustin, who will be leading today's discussion. The email that I have comes from a parent name. Her name is Tara Kittle. Another solution could be to maintain using Google Classroom as the main framework for the high school curriculum, then split the students into a study group A and study group B. So students would come to school during their study group to ask questions and discussions in each class, but they would continue to turn in their assignments on Google Classroom. It's important to maintain using Google Classroom during 2021 school year in the event there is a dramatic increase in COVID-19 cases in the fall and winter, and we have to close the school again. No matter which path we choose, we need to choose the path that is easy to facilitate back to home learning when necessary. It's also important to keep in mind, these are extraordinary times, one in a century circumstances. And as frustrating as these may be for all of us, and how sad and disappointing in some ways, we want to continue to make choices that will save the most lives, especially there since there is so much about COVID-19 that doctors do not understand, including long-term negative side effects. As cases are currently rising again in Los Angeles County, talk of returning to physical classes feel premature. As frustrating as this is to hear, but we are still in the midst of this pandemic. We must err on the side of caution and maintain remote learning and social distancing until there is a proven treatment effect or vaccine for our families. Tara Kittle, mother of a rising senior. And that's all I have for public comment. So we're now going to resume back to our study session and I see Mrs. Smith and Mrs. Caper has also have us joined us. And I want to also point out that we have a new student board member, Yoni Kashanian. How are you, Yoni?
Hi.
Thanks about you. So nice to see you. Can I, I'm going to call you Mr. Kashanian. But I want to welcome you to part of this board and to part of this year's discussion. It's going to be wonderful to have you on the dais and so welcome. And I hope that you will also be an active participant in today's study session. So once again, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, so Dustin, the floor is yours.
Excellent. Thank you, everyone, for coming to the study session. I wanted to open up real fast. You'll see on the posting, there was a COVID-19 LCAP that was posted. It was an operational written report that will be submitted by the end of the month to LACO. And what I wanted to do is just be able to draw the attention to the Board of Education. I had sent it to them previously just to be able to review. The LCAP, just for the public consumption, was pushed back to December of 2020. So in replace, LACO and the California Department of Education had released a written report, which we had to submit just to explain how BHUSD transitioned into home learning. And so you'll see those questions that I wrote narratives for. Those will be submitted to the CDE and to LACO. But again, it just kind of put the LCAP itself on a freeze. We will bring the LCAP back for public and also for the Board of Education feedback, probably closer to September or October for submittal for December of 2020. The great part is, just so you guys are aware, we'll be also presenting the strategic plan very soon. So that'll help dictate and drive some of the conversation around the LCAP. So I just want to open up, is there any questions around the COVID-19 written response for the LCAP? Before I move on.
I actually do have a question, Dustin. So did LACO say that the regular LCAP after June for next year per se, normally we would have to turn that in July 1st? Did they make an exception this year because of COVID-19 and that they just asked all the districts to turn it in in, what is it, in December?
Correct. So we, so for just a history lesson, real quick, this is the first three-year cycle for the LCAP. In previous years, it was a separate system. This is the first full three-year cycle for an LCAP. We were supposed to rewrite and submit for June 30th of this year for the next three years. So 2020 all the way to 2023. However, once unfortunately, COVID had started shutting down some of our physical locations across the state of California, they extended that and actually revised it completely. So one, we will be submitting a one-year LCAP for the year of 2021. And then we're going to rewrite again a three-year LCAP, which then will be submitted June of 2021 for the years 21 to 24. So unfortunately, I hate to say this out loud, but instead of making it easier on us in these hard times, they've actually made more work for us. So we did the COVID-19 written response for operations. So we'll submit that at the end of this month. In addition, then, we will write a one-year LCAP to then turn around and then write a three-year LCAP for the following. So there's a lot of the me's and Dr. Bregge in the world that are not as happy with this versus writing the three-year LCAP that was originally proposed. So we'll be writing three documents versus one.
Thank you. I think that was an important point to clarify. Thank you, Dustin.
Absolutely. So again, the purpose we're here today is obviously the study session around discussion of the options that were presented at our last board meeting. What we did was we reposted our previous presentation by design to remind everybody what we had presented, but never had the opportunity to actually discuss. What I am going to do though is I'm going to open up in a couple of minutes, if Dr. Bregge doesn't want to say anything prior to, with a presentation of where the Options Committee had met post our presentation to the board and started to break apart some of these options a little bit further. And Dr. Bregge?
Yes, thank you. I just want to just kind of back up for just a second to, I know that there's a lot of anxiety that's going around with, you know, what are we doing and how are we going to do it and how are we going to staff it? And I just want you to know that the real rule here for moving forward is public health. And I just want to share with you that it's really confusing to the community and the public when other organizations that, you know, like the state of California putting out a guidebook about how to reopen schools. And those are all great things and the CDC putting out how to reopen schools. And so they're pretty general. And so what I just want to remind everybody is until we get in our hands the order from Public Health on reopening our schools, until we get that, you know, we can do all the planning that we possibly can and we need to be doing that. But I know that what's happening now is that public order is coming out. School districts that have already started to move forward with their plan are now having to go back and redo their plan because of what's happening through the order from Public Health that is not out yet. So I just want to make everybody really, just to bring down the anxiety a little bit, that we are on target. We are in a good place right now. We do not have that order. But I think we're in a good place to move forward. And I think today, what would be so helpful to the administration is to be able to get some direction after we provide you with some additional information. Because I think what really needs to change here, and then I'll stop and hand it over, is everything that we do in a school district is driven by student request. And that's how we staff our programs. And so we have to get to a point, and sooner than better, like sooner than later, we need to get to a point and would be better for us is to get an understanding of where our community is and what they want to do moving forward. So I think after today, we provide some details. This is the first opportunity that we've had to really have some dialogue with the board. This was presented to you before, but it was the first time that you saw it. And so that's why the study session was requested, so that we could have this dialogue. So it's not going to be about fancy presentations and this is our opportunity to have dialogue. And I just want to be able to, at the end of the dialogue, have some direction. Because again, everything that we do is based on student interest, parent interest. And so where are we going to be putting that? Everything is staffing. So I just want that to kind of be the umbrella of where we are. Because anything we do, we need to know where kids are going to be and which option parents want their kids to be in. So I just wanted to start off by giving you that information and to let you know that the Public Health order, we should be receiving that very, very soon. And it's very, very specific on what we can and cannot do, including things like how we need to run a music class. So that's coming. But I just want you to know, that's all being in the revision process right now. And so we're not too early, we're not too late. We're actually in a very good place right now to have this conversation.
Thank you, Dr. Bregge. And I'm going to kind of pee back off that statement in the sense that when you do see some of the school districts in the state of California that have released any sort of information, it's really been around kind of two buckets, right? One, we already know how to do traditional school. So that we already are in the process of building those master schedules. We already have rooms assigned. We already have class rosters for the most part built for our students. Instructional materials have already been ordered. All those things are done. So if everything dissolves by the middle of July or the beginning of August, we all know confidently that we can go ahead and start school traditionally if that was the case by Public Health. Unfortunately, we don't have a crystal ball, so we have to plan for really two options. If you look at any other school district, they've kind of taken all those hundreds of options and all these really cool ideas and started to pare them back of what is going to be fiscally responsible, what we have the FTE to be able to support, and then also just our physical locations and safety. So after our presentation to the Board of Education, the Options Committee reconvened one more time. And even since then, and I thank them, a lot of them are actually on this call, have had other meetings with staff members. Like the TK Kinders and even first grade had had a couple of meetings to discuss some options and how best to help support their students in the different options that we'll be presenting. All the way to, I've received communication, phone calls from a wide variety of teachers in many different subject areas in providing additional insight into their needs for their specific subjects and their specific classes. So that being said, I'm going to jump into an actual presentation, which is a modification of what you received during that board meeting. Oh, sorry. Just a thumbs up if you can see everybody, my screen? Okay. So ultimately, you're going to hear us start to talk about no longer options, but more about phases. And why phases? Because some families are going to be reaching their phase three, which is basically that traditional school at different points in their life. Some families are going to feel comfortable coming back to a brick and mortar starting in August, and some are not. So we're going to start talking about phases versus options. First and foremost, I do want to thank again, a lot of our Options Committee is in attendance today. And so even after this presentation, if there's any questions from the Board of Education, we're all here to be able to help answer any of those questions for you. So thank you to the Options Committee. Again, just as a reminder, we use that guiding question of, we had to disassemble a system overnight. We now have a few months to reassemble that system. Are we coming back to something better? And what social impact do we need to consider? And that's that social emotional learning component that is going to be so important to make that connection with our students. Last but not least, you'll see safety, that public safety is a huge component in consideration, not only for the students, but also our staff, instruction, social emotional support, technology, facilities, operations, and then lastly, the communication piece. So for further understanding, and this is where it starts to change, these are the things that I really want us to really dive into today and really discuss to make sure that everybody has the same level of understanding. One, elementary has completely different needs that need to be considered around like social distancing. Our younger students still have not truly learned what it means to be a student. And I say that in the sense that when you look at our sixth grade and up, our secondary students have been typically in the system for five to six years. Our kindergarten students this year were only in school for about four months before being brought into home learning. So they
I'm sorry, I think we lost Dustin. Something happened, so hopefully he will rejoin, I'm sure, shortly. Does he know? He's not with us, Dr. Bregge?
He is upstairs, so I'm going to text him. I had the same problem here at the district office yesterday. Some of you saw me jumping on and off the meeting, so it could be an issue here.
There he is.
Wait, I saved my name. This is why Hi, everyone. I should have stayed at home today and did my toward the district office.
That's okay. You were talking about the kindergartners and how they've only been in school for four months.
Perfect. Let me go back to presenting. Can everyone see at least my screen now? Not yet?
Now we can.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, so again, I'm just, I'm going to start back from where I left off in the sense that, you know, our kindergartners were only in our seats for about four months prior to leaving. So some of the things we have to reconsider around moving into fall of 20 is how do we retrain and reteach our elementary students just to be students again? Again, our sixth through 12th grade, one of the things that has to be understood is there's a lot of this lingo being thrown out, even at the state level and other school districts. Around 50% within a certain class are here or there. What we can guarantee is 50% of the population being on campus. But when you look at the middle school and the high school, you have 42 singletons at BBMS and 93 singletons at BHHS. If you times 93 times 30, there are over 3,000 variations of those individual schedules that are apparent within those classes. You aren't able to, and anybody that tells you they can are lying to your face. You can't separate all those individual schedules where only 12 students can be apparent in each of those classes. There will be some courses where there might be 15 students and some courses where there might be eight students when you remove 50% of the population. It's based off those singleton courses that drives that conversation. So when we get into the blended model, it's something that you want to remind yourself of is we can guarantee 50% of the population on campus, but we can't guarantee only 50% of the population in attendance in that singleton classroom. We already have a successful independent study model set in place. That is one of the things that sets us apart from other school districts, is we've already been successful in running the Independent Learning Center. So we have a model in place for that possible virtual learning.
It's happening again, so.
Isabel, I have a question that needs to explain, I think, what a singleton class is and what that means.
Yes, I am going to ask him, but we've lost him unfortunately.
Oh, I know. I have a quite dense to get the question in. That's why.
And this is David. I'm checking right now to see what, there shouldn't be, there's no network issue at the district office. I'm not sure who's hosting the meeting. Because whoever's hosting the meeting is carrying the bandwidth for everybody in the meeting. So I'm just, I just want you to know, I'm checking on this.
Is it Kbev, Dr. Bregge, or is it you? You need to unmute yourself.
You're muted.
Kbev is the host for the meeting.
Okay. Okay. So anyway, I'm just want you to know, I'm checking.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yesterday.
Hi, Dustin. So when you broke off, Mrs. Marcus had a great question or request. She wanted you to explain singletons, because I don't think everyone understands that watching. And I want to make sure that we are, we're explaining what that means.
So singleton are courses, whether they be elective, fine arts, graduation requirements like personal finance, they are courses where they are offered once within the schedule. And so when a student is enrolled in that singleton course, let's use, I'm going to use your book as a prime example, for lack of better terms. If your book is a singleton course with say 32 students in there, there's no way for us to be able to take those 32 individual students and then look at their other singleton course, which could be a wide variety. Those 32 individual students in your book could have 32 other individual electives that none of them have the same schedule. So when you're separating the 50% off the campus, you're looking at 4,000 schedules times, you know, and so it's a lot more difficult. And you can't logistically do so unless we extend the blended model into three or four weeks long. So I just wanted to help you guys understand what that singleton meant. So out of a process, would it be best if I tried to present again? I think that might be is what's kicking me off from our internet here. Or should I send the presentation to the board? Or what do you think from a process stack? Try it one more time?
Dustin, are you using Chrome? Because the Chrome extension keeps kicking me off every few seconds and I'm seeing it has a bug. I looked, just looked online. So do you want to try using Safari?
I can.
Just a suggestion. I don't know if it's going to help, but that's what keeps, I keep getting kicked out of the meeting as well. And I'm at home, not at the office. I thought I saw Romeo with the presentation, but I thought I saw him kind of have an overlay of it. Maybe he, is it easier for him to present? For the group? He's not with us right now, I don't think, but I saw him. Earlier, I saw a, he actually had it on his screen, so that's why I was making this suggestion. But I'll leave it to you.
I am going to, at this point, just try to switch browsers so that way I can at least do the presentation for you guys. I apologize, I'm just logging into the other browsers before I exit. I will see you guys soon.
And this is David again. So far, there's nothing showing up on our network that looks like there's a, it's a network issue. So it may be a browser issue. Meets runs through Chrome. It's a Google product, so let me, I'm still checking, but I just want to give you an update while we're waiting.
So Gretchen is getting the same issue as I am in terms of this. Oh, here's Dustin. Great. With the Google Chrome extension.
The Safari won't allow me to open up Google Meets.
Okay, can Dr. Bregge share a few? Do you want to run down to his office?
Hi, Dr. Bregge. You have access to my presentation?
Yep, hang on one second. Let me see. Let me pull it up.
And it does, it does appear to be a Chrome problem. Google's aware of it.
Can you see that now? Is that up for everybody?
I see it on my screen, but it's tiny. How can I make it larger?
Um, it's, I don't know, because it's large on my screen. Is it, is it, can everybody else see this or is it too small?
My screen shows it. I can see it pretty well. Not a problem.
I can see it as well, Dr. Bregge.
Okay.
So I will take 47. So other things to, just for the understanding is, it's not just about training or professional development around our teachers. It's also the staff and it's also the customer. And select a blended model, we also have to prep our maintenance and operations to be able to handle that feat as well. And that would go into the protocols for accountability. So also the safety measures that can be in place for a sense of security for not only our staff, but also our students. And last but not least, also in consideration is that our high school staff is a more senior staff. And so we want to also take that in consideration when we're trying to build out this blended model. Next slide. So ultimately, phase one. This is one of the things that we had presented to the Board of Education a couple of weeks ago, is the virtual learning. Some are utilizing this interchangeable word called academy. Again, it's all very similar to the independent study model that is approved through the California Department of Education. We in BHUSD utilize Apex, which is UC and NCAA approved. And that would and could be the vehicle in which we deliver that virtual learning to our students. Some would call it a plug and play in the sense that it is a virtual comprehensive textbook assessment tool and grading tool for the teacher to facilitate and instruct from. It's not in replacement of the teacher who we need for teacher record. It is a vehicle to keep consistency across the district for those teachers so they don't have to recreate. across the district for those teachers, so they don't have to recreate the wheel for each, every single day. So obviously, within the virtual learning, it would be, um, then we would follow the current independent learning center model that we currently have with utilizing Apex as the tutorials, the assessments, the grading, with a, a teacher assigned to each individual student for support, instruction, weekly meetings. Next slide, Dr. Braggy. Uh, so for consideration for Phase One is, one, we need to consider the purchase of a district license for Apex Learning, which is thirty-eight thousand dollars for unlimited seats, sixth through twelfth grade, and included is professional development. Now only offering opportunities during the summer, but also leveraging the start of school, which I believe is the August twelfth, thirteenth dates. We would need commitment from the parents and the students to maintain that home learning for at least a semester. And the reason being is because the pacing between the courses of what's happening within the brick and mortar might be slower or might be faster than the way that the student is working in collaboration with their independent learning teacher. Last, we would also possibly need to hire and train additional FTE and look at additional administration to support this model. Depending on the number of students that enroll into the virtual learning is depending on how much support we might need to provide. If you cross-reference other school districts in our surrounding area that are offering this as an option, they have included higher of additional administrative support, administration, teachers, and school counselors to support social, emotional learning of those students in this Phase One. We would also have to work with the union on an MOU to align curriculum as closely as possible to Apex in the case of a wave two of closures. Meaning if we started the virtual learning in collaboration with a blended learning, we would need to try to keep the pacing as close as possible in the case that if we were to have to exit after two weeks of being back in school. Uh, next slide, please. Phase two is that blended model, and you will see from the original presentation, which we had posted, for you guys to review prior to this meeting, we had a wide variety of different options that we were able to vet. And through further conversation and even more work since that presentation, you'll see that we've tried to clean up and tighten a little bit some of those options. An example is when we looked at the intensive model, whether it be a three or five week intensive of starting with only period one, there is no exit strategy to that model. I'm gonna explain that a little further. If we delivered first period to all students each day as a summer school model, if we were to come back full-time and be clear, because there's a vaccine, let's say in November, we now don't have a first period for all of our students across the district. We could modify the time periods and then only have our students be enrolled in periods, say, two through seven in the middle school, or two through six with a zero period at the high school. So we could do that, but it would shrink our instructional minutes for that return, just so we're aware. We're the Options Committee, and I believe that the majority of the stakeholders that I've had engagement with really are leaning towards two kind of blended options. One, there's a Week A and a Week B. And let me get into a little further explanation. So during Week A, students, meaning fifty percent of our population, would be on attendance on campus, and they would go about normal business. They would follow their, whether that be a seven-period schedule or a six-period schedule over four days' time. Monday through Thursday and Friday cleaning, and I'm gonna explain the Friday cleaning in a second. This will prevent the cross-contamination of having one set population of students on campus and then bringing another one within that same week. Having Fridays off allows a three-day window for extensive cleaning before the next set of students attend. In addition, if anyone were to be sick, the incubation window is anywhere between twenty-four to forty-eight hours. We would be aware that there was a sick student on our campus, and we could go ahead and put in additional safety measures, whether we have to find a substitute teacher for the teacher or replace anybody. In addition to this model, our students are still learning a hundred and eighty days' worth of curriculum. So let me explain a little further. Week A students, the A students are on campus. We, the B students are at home watching instruction via ViewSonic on their laptops at home. They can hear the discussion that's happening within the classroom, and the teacher has the possibility of also presenting the students that are at the home portion learning on the ViewSonic for classroom discussion. So they are still participating in instruction while being home. Then at Week B, the A students are now being instructed at home, while the B students are in the seat in the brick and mortar. Again, though, the A students are still logging in. They're accessing through MyViewBoard, which is a, a, a software that's attached to the ViewSonic in the classroom and can see the presentations, any instruction written on the board, and hear the teacher. And the teacher, again, can present on the side, and I'll show you a short video in a second, of the students at home to engage them in conversation and instruction. Through this blended model, we could continue instruction of a hundred and eighty days. Uh, Dr. Braggy? However, the other option would be a day cycle, where you have the A, fifty percent of the population in attendance on Monday and Tuesday, and then fifty percent of the population on Thursday, Friday. However, I know we're only here to discuss instruction. I do want you to recall that if you look at an incubation period of twenty-four to forty-eight hours, our window's so tight that are we going to cross-contaminate from Group A to Group B by only having a singleton day of cleaning in between where new students are utilizing those facilities? Go ahead, Dr. Braggy. So right now, Dr. Braggy is actually gonna show you a video of what I attempted to try to explain to you.
Hey guys, today I'm gonna explain to you about MyViewBoard Meet, which is a function that works with Zoom, GoToMeeting, and other third-party video conferencing applications. Now, MyViewBoard has a single sign-on function, which means, once you sign in, it will activate your third-party video conferencing applications, and that's gonna let you, uh, do whiteboarding while video conferencing at the same time. Alright guys, so now I'm gonna give you a demo on how to use MyViewBoard Meet. So the first thing we're gonna do is hit the MyViewBoard Meet icon, and that's this one over here. And then you can choose your video conferencing app. So this time, we're gonna use Zoom. Click that one, then hit this icon over here to start the meeting. These windows will pop up, and then over here, somebody's gonna join us in our meeting in just a second. Here it is, you just hit Share the Screen. Share the Screen again. Hi, Dinar.
Hi.
Okay, and, uh, this is gonna allow you to do whiteboarding while you're video conferencing, so I'm gonna show you how to do that right now. Then you select your pen. Do a little simple math, one plus two equals, and then your participant will be able to answer the question, just like that. Nice job. And, uh, if you want to use GoToMeeting, uh, we're gonna show you how to use that one in just a second. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna hit, and then select the GoToMeeting icon. And then start a meeting.
Alright, Dr. Braggy.
Sorry, hang on one sec.
And here you just finish the assignment process. Alright, as you can see, somebody's joined our.
Sorry, it was in the way. There we go.
Consider, yep, there, there you go. Consideration for Phase Two. One, purchase the district license of Apex Learning, again, for the sixth through twelfth grade for professional development. Um, whether we are coming in and out, is there a wave two? And we already have, from Phase One, some students that could be only doing virtual learning. We, software, MyViewBoard, MPD for the blended learning through the ViewSonic. So this isn't necessarily a live stream of seeing the teacher. The student is seeing the board and hearing the audio. So I just want to be very clear that it's not the teacher's face, it's not the teacher physically being seen by student, unless the teacher wanted a video cam in the room. Say, if a kindergarten teacher wanted a video cam in the room for the kindergarten students that are at home to be able to see the mid-embellishment of play, they could do so. But right now, it's only focused on the MyViewBoard, which is the interactive exchange from the student at home to what's happening live within the classroom on the ViewSonic. Uh, communication of, it's fifty percent of the population on campus that we have to understand and be comfortable with that some of the classes might have fifteen students, and some might have four students, depending on the week of instruction. But yet knowing, if we use the MyViewBoard, those students that either might get sick or not feel comfortable that week coming back can still access the instruction being delivered through MyViewBoard. So if I'm an A-week student, or even an A-day student, I can still stay home if I'm ill to still get my instruction from what's happening in the classroom. We obviously need to work with our union on an MOU to align curriculum as closely as possible to Apex in the cases of second wave closure. Create opportunities for grade levels to articulate. Primary focus is on standards and project-based learning. This is important. We learned that during second semester of this year through the home learning process, is the way that we assess, instruct, is different. Support the integration of technology. There is going to be a lot of professional development regardless of what option or what phase that the families choose to go with. We need to get our teachers engaged in this process immediately and our custodial staff. We also need to focus on our social-emotional learning, and that's just one more consideration. What does it feel like, seem like, when our students are now back on campus for the first time? And I go back to our kindergarten students who are only on campus for four weeks. Last but not least, we always need to provide that virtual option for those students that decide, decide to stay home. And then last but not least, Dr. Braggy, is that kind of timeline, and just to kind of think, obviously, step-to-date again with the, with the LA County and obviously the Public Department of Health, we're trying to currently narrow down these instructional options and start to collaborate with our BHUSD union groups. We are reviewing facilities, we're consulting with operations, but we need to train our appropriate staff before the fall of 2020. Part of that discussion today should be around, what is it that we feel confident, comfortable being able to communicate, get out ahead of, and have parents start making decisions around for us to be able to prepare, prepare fiscally, professional development-wise, uh, for the fall of 2020? And after trying to do that, that will be the end of the presentation.
Okay, um, thank you, Dustin. Dr. Braggy, I'm not sure if you want to talk a little bit at this point, um, regarding some of the guidance that LACO or the CDC is providing for the district and how it specifically affects Beverly Hills Unified, maybe not yet? Or did you have, did you want to talk about, did you want to maybe, um, provide or have an opportunity for the, for the members of the Options Committee to weigh in, or, um?
Sure, I, I would, I would love to hear from some of the, uh, committee members, and I'm just so grateful, uh, to get their input in this process. Yesterday, uh, I joined, um, about eighty other LA County superintendents, uh, to begin looking at the review of the public health order, and so, um, so I, I feel like I, I have a lot of knowledge about what's going in there. That information is embargoed, so I can't share it publicly with you, but I can share with you that, um, we spent about three hours, uh, giving feedback to our state superintendent, um, about, uh, the, the restrictions of the order, what would work, what wouldn't work. And so that should be coming out shortly, but I just want you to know that that, that is the most important thing, that, that it will help guide us as we go forward, um, is that public order, because it is, it is literally a checklist of liabilities that the school district, uh, will have to, uh, ensure that, that we are following. And so, that will be out shortly, and then I will share that once that's public, but, um, I'm glad you, you mentioned that, Mrs. Hacker, because, you know, that's something that we're gonna have to keep referring to, and, um, and I can tell you that even if we get direction today to start looking at, um, finding interest, so we can start the staffing piece, that we're going to have to be really adaptable to, um, the change. Because this public health order that comes out, um, is, will change, um, you know, several times before, uh, August. And so we just have to know that, that the, the plans that have just been shared with you, um, are adaptable. And that's the key word here, is that we have to have adaptable planning for our students and our parents, because it, because of the, because of the change, because it's so fluid. So, but I would love for some of the committee members just to kind of weigh in. Um, I, I know that I'm really excited about, uh, the, the direction and some of the programming that was shared today.
Okay, so do you want to call out on them, Dr. Braggy? Do you want to call on them, or?
I mean,
I'm not sure who's prepared to speak.
Yeah, we, uh, uh, just for clarification, they really, uh, were joining for kind of to be able to answer any of the questions that the Board of Education might have, or be able to provide kind of insight from the teacher's standpoint. So you'll see representation, like, and that is early elementary, Joanna's intermediate elementary. So if there's specific questions around kind of the options themselves, they're really here more from a Q and A standpoint, less of a formalized presentation standpoint.
Okay, so, um, unless one of you wants to speak out, you can raise your hand. Otherwise, what I'll do is I'll go around with the school board, and we'll start taking turns asking our questions. And I just want to point out to the board that I realize that as we go around, you might develop a new question or have a new, uh, concern or comment, so we will go around twice, hopefully get enough of your answers and comments and have this discussion. This is a discussion, so, so I want the board to really weigh in and have an opportunity to ask all your questions, because I'm sure this is, um, an opportunity for all of us to do this together. So, um, let's see, let's start with, um, we'll start with Mr., let me start around the other way. I'll start with Mrs. Marcus, and we'll go back to Noah, because I think we've been starting the other way. So, Mrs. Marcus, I saw your hand first, so we'll go to you first.
Ah, yes, uh, this gives us a little more clarity. I'd just like to say that, and that really looks like there's been more attention to the schedule. I had a very interesting thought that occurred, and I don't know whether this was given any, uh, consideration, but I saw that in Phase One, uh, the use of the goalbook and the Apex, et cetera, as a, a learning, to continue the learning, right? Would it not be possible for the parents who opt for Phase One to use the, uh, weekly schedule that you have in Phase Two as a model and be kept going on with that? And so that they could be at home getting what A and B, Week One, Week Two, Week Three is, in that direction?
Absolutely, and so one hundred percent, and that's where I kind of alluded a little bit in the Phase Two conversation of, say that we start school, and then there's a student that actually is sick. You know, we have chickenpox, not even with COVID, it has to be out. They can go in and out fluidly in Phase Two. We have Phase One specifically only for those students that might have compromised immunodeficiency, and absolutely know, one hundred percent, that they aren't going to phase in or out of whether Semester One or Semester Two, and they want a completely virtual program to maintain until this whole COVID thing blows over. So that's why that Phase One's there. I push heavily on Phase Two for those families that might want to enroll in a virtual. I would explore the option of seeing your comfortability level and maintaining that social-emotional contact with your teachers and your classmates.
Right, yeah, yeah, no problem. Yeah, yeah.
So the question might be, as far as faculty would be concerned for this then, in terms of the teacher. The teacher who is in Phase Two with Week One, Week Two situation, that teacher would not be the same teacher then at all that would be handling the independent or the Apex or goalbook, right? You need another teacher then.
Correct. We, so for those families that absolutely are not interested in engaging in a brick-and-mortar setting at all for at least Semester One, would be completely enrolled into the Independent Learning Center model, whether that be at the elementary, middle, or high school level. We would have to determine how many students at each grade band and then assign FTE accordingly. For those that are on the fence, I recommend the Phase Two to stay with that because it does provide that fluid opportunity. But that Phase Two teacher is not part of Phase One. Totally separate teachers, totally separate programs.
Okay, and I have one more question. So under the plan with the blended model with the Week One, Week Two, Week Three, you're talking about 180 weeks. They're going to get the 100, there is no repeat from Week One to Week Two. It's just a matter of the new students in the classroom and it's going to be a continuation. They just, one week you're lucky to be with the teacher, the next week you're not so lucky to be with the teacher. And you just continue in that respect. I want to make that clear so everybody stands that there are not going to be any repeat of material during Week Two when you were there for Week One and so on. You might just want to make that comparative, to make that known. And I'm going to let this go around to the second round and maybe I'll come up with some other questions that might come around. But those were the ones that I got off the first round, and I thank you.
Mrs. Walker Schuman. I am so excited and so grateful to the Options Committee and to the cabinet and staff for doing so much work to get all these options together. You know, this is not an easy task to try and sort out how to service all of the students, all with different schedules, and all of the different families with different approaches to how they want to come back to school in the fall. And I so appreciate that this actually gives the option for pathways for both, really. The split week, I think, is phenomenal. I think it really answers the keeping the cohort together, having the time to clean Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then bringing in another cohort. That, to me, seems like a really smart way to manage this. Utilizing Apex and the ViewBoard, I mean, phenomenal. Really just brilliant. And I recognize that there are going to be some families that are not happy with that because they want their kids in school every week. But I do think that that's actually a super equitable way to manage it because you can service the entire population in that way. So I just, I'm really excited for this. I can't wait to hear more of the conversation as it evolves with the Return to Learn Think Tank and some of the concerns and how we really marry the guidelines that we have already from the state, the public health guidelines that are coming, and the options that we know are real and relevant. So I just, I thank you. This is really just terrific thinking, terrific resources. I'm really hopeful that, especially given that we have a lot of staff on board for these conversations, that coming to agreement with the union and developing an MOU so that we're all aligned and can support the students and community and the staff in a reasonable way. I'm very hopeful for the outcome of that as well. So just terrific work. I really don't have any questions. I think a lot of the questions that I do have are just not able to be answered right now. The things that I have questions about are, you know, how are we going to do choral music where kids are singing? How are we going to do woodwinds? How are we going to do sports where they're required to be in close contact? Which of those things are we not going to be able to go forward with? But we don't know the answers to those things right now. That's literally what we're waiting on, you know, to make additional decisions. But this is a fantastic springboard and starting point for, you know, how we plan for return in the fall. So thank you.
Okay, Mr. Spitz.
Yes. First of all, I want to agree with Mrs. Walker Schuman. I think that staff's efforts to comply with what I consider near impossible conditions, that your efforts have been Herculean and no less than brilliant. But I want to say this, that there always have been and always will be roadblocks to delivering the best possible education for our children and young adults. Always have been roadblocks, some more challenging than others. But in my opinion, the roadblock that we're facing today is the most challenging and the most potentially harmful for our students in the history of the district. And that is a draconious, mindless decree by the LA County Department of Public Health that would so constrain school districts that acquiescence would torpedo their educational programs. And I believe that we should go all out to head off or oppose or defy any such decrees. According to that same LA County Department of Health, as of June 9, the reported coronavirus cases among the age group 0 through 17 was 15 hundreds of 1%, 15 hundreds of 1% of that population, or 39 cases per 20,000 children. Although some infected children have been asymptomatic and therefore unreported, and by the way, less likely to infect others, the overall percentage of school-age infections is inconsequential. And correspondingly, the number of adults infected by contact with children is equally inconsequential. I concentrate on certain, well, these are my concerns, adverse effects of masks and social distancing, which include stifled ability to speak, practice phonics, and understand each other. No smiles or other facial expressions. Stifled interaction hindering social and emotional development, inhibited playground activity, group, work projects, sports, performing arts and the like, discomfort and skin disorders, and other illnesses from prolonged mask-wearing. Then there's some questions about enforcement. Will consequences of mask and distancing violations be codified and enforced equitably throughout the district? And will those consequences vary to be age-appropriate? As to educational outcomes, challenging academic courses require year-long, intense, in-class engagement. I just don't see how blended routines can deliver on that standard. Our students' educations were impeded last year by the disadvantages and limitations of home, online instruction. Continuing home, online instruction in the next year will compound that impediment. So, as I say, with all due respect to staff and appreciation for their efforts to comply with near impossible conditions, I believe that compulsory masks and social distancing and blended outcomes will prove to be impractical, unworkable, and detrimental measures that are hugely disproportionate to the risk of coronavirus infections among the students. Now, having said all that, if the decisions are going to be to go along, to support these these solutions that have been laid out before us today, of course I will support them, of course I would. But I do think that there is another option. Of course, it would defy those draconian decrees. And that would be that since the risk of COVID-19 to school-age children is minuscule, we could reopen our schools in 2021 as normally as possible with appropriate measures to keep symptomatic students away. And that means masks optional, no social distancing, and no home, online learning. At-risk and concerned teachers can work remotely from their homes if classroom assistance is needed. Sports and other competitive activities should be normal to the extent that competition is available from other schools. If inter-district competition is not available, then competing intra-district teams should be organized. I just believe that parents would support this option overwhelmingly if we fully informed them with the reasoning behind it. Once again, I say that's an option. If it is not supported, then of course, as I said before, I will support the blended options that we've seen before us today. Thank you.
And if I could just, Mrs. Hacker, just clarify. So I want to point out that this is, you know, very unprecedented, that, you know, something like this is happening where we're very used to, and a lot of the guidebooks that are coming out about reopening schools, you know, give the local control back to the school board and administration. However, in this particular case, I just want to clarify that the real boss here is public health. And so it is, they're not providing, I can tell you this without jeopardizing confidentiality, that they're not providing options when it comes to things like masks and with the social distancing piece and with how you can run lunches. I mean, this is, you know, it's done by county. And we happen to be in one of the most conservative counties in the country, I would say. And so, which is very different from like Orange County, where their order, their public health order is different from ours. And so I just want to clarify that we are not going to have the luxury with some of the items, like masks and things like that, is really going to be directed to us. There will be some things that the local school board will be able to make some decisions. I just want to clarify that it's very unprecedented. But like, this is like the order, and it's a public order. So, you know, I just want to throw that out there. And then just the piece that we really have to have conversations about protecting our staff. And that is a real concern for us to ensure that staff, we need to find out, you know, who's coming back and who's ready to come back. And those that are coming back, that we protect them as well. And that is by following the public health order. I feel like after sitting through meetings just recently, that the administration is going to be taking on the role of being on staff for public health when it comes to, you know, how are we going to handle kids and staff or even a parent in a home that becomes positive with COVID-19? And how do we handle that if there's been a student or staff member that's been in contact with this person? It's, there's a lot coming. I just want to just clarify that, you know, the order is, you know, very restrictive and directive. But we also want to ensure that we're very safe with our staff as well.
Thank you, Dr. Buggie, and thank you, Mr. Spitz. I'm now going to ask Mr. Margot to weigh in. Thank you, Mr. Margot.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for the presentation, Dustin, and for the Options Committee. Just out of curiosity, was there anybody on the Options Committee that dissented to this? For these phases? Or was everybody in agreement?
I think that we worked very collaboratively, and I don't think that anyone was in dissent unless I'm speaking on your behalf. So you can tell me you hate me now publicly. No, I'm just kidding. Go ahead, Annette.
No, nobody dissented. It was a very collaborative group. The only thing was, for me, as a representative of my group, which was the Early Education, so I spoke with the TKK, first-grade teachers mostly, and second-grade teachers. They're definitely bearing opinions, obviously. Some of us, you know, view ourselves as essential workers. Like, I feel like I'm kind of like a fireman or a policeman. I'll go to work, I'll wear my mask or my shield or whatever. And that's my job because I feel like education is essential. There are some people that have underlying health issues that I don't have, that maybe have family members that they're taking care of, that take care of their parents that are much older. So they are definitely not interested in coming back. So I think just among talking with our own groups that we represented, there's definitely a lot of different viewpoints. But as a group, we all, I mean, I don't want to speak for everybody. We all seem to come to consensus that we like these.
Thank you. It was good to hear that. The, you know, Mr. Spitz said a lot, and I just, I think the problem is, kids aren't teaching themselves. They need adults to be in the classroom, to clean the schools, to administrate, to work in the offices. And those people are at risk. Those people are at much greater risk than students are. And statistically, you're correct about that, Mr. Spitz. The problem is, they're still at risk. And we're still, by bringing people onto campus, we are potentially putting people at risk. We could take as many safety measures as public health allows us to. Doesn't guarantee anything. And it's a tricky situation to have to come to work at your own risk. We've seen what happened to emergency workers, doctors, nurses, fire police in New York City, what happened when it was spiking over there. And now it's spiking as the country reopens. Cases are spiking all over the place. People who are contracting the disease and surviving, some of them have permanent impairments now to their respiratory systems. These are real things. This is happening in real time. So we have to take this as serious as possible. And still, because first and foremost, safety, then education, right? That's always our charge as a district. Dustin, I wanted to ask you, we have two phases that really kind of answer, and I don't know if they're really phases. I think they're options because you keep on saying that if families decide to opt and stay in Phase One into that independent learning, that's going to be an option for them. If, from what you presented with the ViewSonic and MyView Board, is there a reason why that completely independent Apex learning supersedes the ViewBoard option if people just want to stay home and be part of it that way as they would every other week?
Dustin, I think you're muted.
Again, I think from us as all being educators that we really want all of our students to resume into that physical seat and really participate in the Phase Two. Whether there be some circumstances where they might extend their stay out. So if I'm an A-week student and I actually don't come to campus maybe for the first three weeks, they're still engaged in instruction. I would rather see the majority of our students go to the blended phase. I think that the social-emotional learning piece is the piece that needs to be considered when making this decision because they'll be engaged with their teacher, they'll be engaged with their classmates, they'll have the opportunity to come on campus when they feel safe to do so. Versus when they make the determination to go completely virtual, they are doing an independent learning model, an independent model that separates that social-emotional learning. Does that help?
Yeah. So let me ask this. Depending on the public health plans in August, we, obviously, it appears to me that we are ready to go in kind of either scenario. I feel that we have enough backup here. But if public health doesn't want people back on campuses, then we will, the whole district will stay with the Phase One? Is that the concept? And not the Phase Two MyView Board only? That's what I was?
Yep, correct. Absolutely.
And let me just clarify too, that that's not, I mean, at this point, I can share- And let me just clarify too, that that's not, I mean, at this point, I can share with you that that the idea is, from where public health is going right now, is to bring back students. But, you know, following social distancing, which again, we can do that. So I want people to know that that is, that is the direction where we're going, is that we are wanting to bring back students as many as possible for that classroom setting. But what's so beautiful about this option though, is that, as I mentioned before, that I think that administrators are going to be like public health officials, because if there is a student that has been in contact with somebody that is positive, they will immediately, and again, this is the kind of direction we're going. But just like what's happening in the real world, that there will be, you know, that student needs to, or a staff member will need to leave and then be under quarantine for 14 days. So the beauty behind the Phase Two piece is that you do have somebody that can float in and float out depending on their personal circumstances. And then, you know, then to be able to come back in, you know, when they're either better or they've been cleared, you know, that type of thing.
So Dr. Bregge, what I'm hearing is that really, based on what you're saying about public health, based on what you're saying about Phase One, Phase One will really only be used at this point by specific families that do not want to have their kids on campus.
Right. I mean, and that's one thing that I know is, that I can share, is that that is going to be an expectation that every school district, if requested, we have to provide an all-virtual. And we do know that there are some communities that have said, look, you know, until there's a vaccine or to, like, they've said, we want to stay in the district, but we need all-virtual. And so we do have to provide that.
Okay, couple last things. The instructional minutes, if we're, how are we breaking that down if we're going to school for four days a week or one day? The, let's say the cleaning day, right? Is that going to be an instructional day still for students at home, the Friday?
Yep. So at this point, we are currently still living under a waiver for the instructional minutes required to deliver. And at this point, the knees in the world are still having conversations about what probably by the end of July, will it look like? Will we be bound by the 12:40 instructional minutes per course? But I believe that there will be a waiver submitted to the California Department of Education.
Okay.
Again, we have, yep.
No, I was just going to say, was it discussed about the idea if we're getting kids back on campus for these four-day stretches, that that's kind of a self-contained timeframe to do group projects and anything like that? Is that part of the conversation?
Yes. Yep. And so we really looked at it as this, where's the window of incubation and where, as far as if the student were to be sick or as we're starting to switch over the students? But then also, how much instruction can we deliver over four? Could be 50-minute, 53-minute, or 60-minute? Because with the middle school, we would look at taking periods one through seven and trying to do them each day versus doing the rotating model so we can get them to see their teacher four times in that week versus only seeing them three times in the week. So there's a lot of things that we're in consideration of getting that four-day window intact.
Okay. And my final question, the I, the TOCs and the I-4s, can they be utilized as part of the plan for the Apex Administration and Support? Can that fall under that department?
I would say, I would say no. That would be my professional and honest opinion, is that I wouldn't want to take them out when we... So the NewSonic portion alone was their assistance in this process. The tech department really worked tirelessly just to figure out the solution of MyView Board under David's direction. So without them in play in the hallways to be able to support those students that are at home weekly, I couldn't understand it. Yeah.
Okay. Because you're bringing up, you're bringing up obviously hiring a position or this, whatever, one or two, I don't know. You didn't really specify how many. We just had a budget study session yesterday. So how did our conversation about yesterday play into this about bringing in more support? Is there, are there federal or state dollars to support this position if this is the way we go? And then we didn't even talk about PPE yet. So.
Yeah.
Well, I was just going to state that, you know, that's why, is the importance to find out, you know, where people are comfortable and where do you want to, how do you want to enroll your students? Because it is, it doesn't necessarily have to be a brand-new position. There could be, you know, a way that we can do some reorganization. Look, but we can't even begin to staff until we know where people are going to be. And so in your question about PPE, right now, the state is stating that they will take care of like masks, sanitizer, that they are going to be all-in, is what they say right now, into providing that, you know, providing that PPE. Where we're going to, what we're looking at right now is an expense that we believe could be covered. They're talking about wanting to help school districts, is putting up like those barriers, like the Plexiglas barriers and dividers and things like that, so that we can keep our staff from each other, from, you know, a parent coming in. But that's also, it can be really limited, is, you know, there really will not be any visitors to the school. But so, but the state has been very supportive as far as stating that they will help provide, you know, that equipment as of right now. But then we can also, you know, work with our parents in PTA, PTSA to see if there's going to be some support for masks and things like that, or shields, because that is a possibility too instead of masks. So all of that's being worked out, but we also want to provide options to parents too. Because, you know, it is difficult, as Mel said, it's really difficult to keep that mask on. I was with superintendents for three hours yesterday. It was so difficult to keep that mask on. And for our elementary or our primary kids, like, you know, and that has, like, I just, wow. This is gonna, this is gonna be really tough to follow some of that.
Yeah. I mean, I think the mask, it's a discipline to keep the mask on, but, you know, surgeons go through 12-hour surgeries with masks on. That's, you know, that's, it's just, they're used to doing it. That's what they do. So I don't think it poses a health risk because I don't think surgeons who have, oh, you know, people who are literally open on an operating table, risking anybody's health or their own or patient by wearing a mask. But I understand how uncomfortable or we're not used to it. So we just at least have to separate out that part of it.
And that, you know, when you're five or six.
Yes. Absolutely. 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 That's, that'll be all sorts of problems. So. All right. Thank you. I'm done.
Okay, Mr. School Board Member, Mr. Jonathan Khashanian, do you want to weigh in, please? Do you have any questions about the high school or any questions for anyone?
Yes. So first of all, I'm pretty happy about the Stage Two. I think it kind of takes into account both sides of the story and makes everybody happy. Also, the fact that you're giving everybody, whoever wants, the chance to stay home and come whenever they feel comfortable. I feel like that'll pretty much help all families to be able to make their own decision. One question I had is, what if we have like too many teachers that don't want to come to school, you know? Like, we're talking about students, but what if we have too many staff members that feel uncomfortable or feel at risk?
That is exactly, oh, that is exactly one of the questions that we're actually trying to tackle as well. So two of the things that we hope walking out of today is, one, we need to be able to set a timeline and communication where we know exactly how many families will not return in the fall that choose to have a virtual learning. One, that can assist us with some of the teachers that might have pre-existing or medical issues that won't allow them to return. We can start to assign maybe those teachers to supporting the virtual learning. But also, we need to have our teachers indicate whether or not they are fit to be able to return as well. So we need to know those two pieces of information to really make sure that we have staffing correct. And then also any sort of budgetary constraints to be considered in that. It's a great question. We need to know both, both students and staff who can return, from custodial staff to food services staff, not just teachers, but all staff.
I see. Thank you.
Okay. Is that it? Do you have any other questions, anybody, before I move on? Okay. So I do have some questions. First of all, again, I concur with all the comments made. I so thank all of you for your time that you've all put into this on top of everything else that you do for our district. So thank you for being part of this group. And I think, you know, I agree with my colleagues, the work has been very thorough and comprehensive. And I think really opens up an opportunity for us to have a very productive discussion about what will take place in the fall. So I have a few questions and they're a little bit more mechanical, Dustin. So I remember very clearly from the first conversation, you touched a little bit, you introduced a little, you know, what the day would look like as far as a schedule. And so in seeing the presentation today, could you please now tell me if you've modified your vision for the schedule? How, and I'm specifically talking about, you know, the blended model, students go to school, they're there. What does it look like? How many hours on a daily basis? What are you envisioning?
So in the presentation, it's a normal day. So.
So there is no, okay, so if it's a normal day and it's, so we have one day where they're not going back. And then Noah touched on this, there's a reduction, it seems like, in instructional minutes, correct?
No. So if we're to go four days or, I'm trying to do the math in my head real quick to explain.
Yeah, I think it's really important so that we clarify this because just from listening to the exchange between you and Noah, it seemed like there was going to be a possible reduction. Obviously, we're losing that day of instruction. And, you know, it's a modified version of returning to school. So that's why I really want to nail that because I, and I know that you might not have it identified 100%, but I'd like to know, what are you envisioning?
Yeah. Right now, we have no direction on instructional minutes. So we can't say yes or no to what the state will come out and request us to be able to deliver. So in second semester this year, they waived all instructional minutes. So anything that we delivered during home learning was basically an added plus. We maintained the current instructional minute requirements that we had in fall of 2019, but there were no instructional minute requirements for spring of 2020. And right now, we still don't have clarification on what the requirement will be for fall of 2020. However, we do know that through the two options, we have to have a day to be able to clean with the staff. We keep talking about staff as only teachers, but it's really about getting the custodial staff, food services, assistant principals, principals, and even the teachers in there to be able to reset for the following group of students. So it's going to be, every Monday is going to be like re-engaging back into some of the processes and procedures. So they have to reset the room for that next group of students. So yes, Fridays, either Friday or Wednesday, in both proposals, would be no non-instructional days for students.
Right. So you could understand how, I understand the, using that day to clean the site and sanitize. I completely understand that, but it really translates to a loss in instructional minutes for students because you only now are going to school four days instead of five days. And especially, is this, and so are you also envisioning the same day of hours for K-5 students?
Yeah. TK through 12 would be on the exact same schedule.
So because of that loss of the day, I'm just, again, I'm just trying to clarify. If there is a loss of that instructional day of the week, what is going to be the priority for the instructional team as far as academics versus enrichment? Because right now, we have a schedule, right? We have a schedule. And I know that we, like, I think it was mentioned earlier, there's still information that is coming down the pipeline that might affect how we actually are able to, what courses we're able to offer more of the enrichment, the PE and all of those courses that have to do more with activity, social activity amongst students. So the question is, I can see Mr. Allen wants to jump in and I, let me just finish my train of thought here. I think you already know what I'm going to ask, right, Mr. Allen? You know where I'm going. So, because this is a question that we're all going to get bombarded with from parents, right? So the question is, so if you have a schedule that is reduced by a day, how are you prioritizing or what are you, what curriculum academics are you prioritizing to capture the days that we are in session? Like, what are those days being made up with?
Can I jump in?
Yes.
Yeah. I think it's important, one of the things to consider is that right now, with our current schedule at the middle school, our students only meet four times a week. They're only, they're meeting four days a week. And so there will be some loss of instruction, but it's not as dramatic as it sounds because under the plan that's been presented, we will still meet four days per week. There will be shorter periods, just, they'll be a little bit shortened to accommodate all seven classes so that kids have all seven of their periods in one day, as opposed to that revolving schedule that we currently have, where kids have six periods and then the seventh period would be the next day. So it's not, it is a loss of instructional minutes, but it's not as dramatic as it may sound to lose an entire day because we're really still only meeting, we're meeting the same number of times per week.
Yes. And I know that the middle school has a really different type of schedule that is a little bit more flexible for what we're talking about. And so I do appreciate that comment, Mr. Allen. I do see how you are a little different. But I was asking, so maybe Mrs. Kaber or Dustin, you know, how does it affect the K-5 students? Because it seems like, and again, I'm basing my questions based on what I remember you talking about last time where you said that the days were going to be shortened. I'm happy to hear that you're now looking at it from a perspective of operation, of operating with the same, you know, schedule that you would in a normal day had, you know, just as we did last semester. But still, that interruption of that day, you know, begs the question, what are you looking at as far as substance? And what are you, what are you filling that day with? What does it look like, K-5?
I can talk about that if you want me to, Mr. Seaman. So part of that, part of GoalBook is, part of the answer is that the independent work that the students can do and they can be assigned when they're at home independently every Friday. And in addition to that, any work that's being assigned from the classroom that is not, I mean, it could be in the homework category, but it would be like longer-term projects where the instruction has already happened in those previous days and they are getting some time to work independently on that where they're going to bring it back in and use it the following week. That's how, it would count like that kind of way, like that independent work time.
So when the students are at school, they're working independently?
No. So instruction is happening over four days. So what we will primarily do is condense and ensure that we are aligning our instruction with standards. We will promise, and we do promise, and we did promise, we're one of the few districts in the state of California that actually got through the full school year and met the standards necessary to say that we completed the 1920 school year. So I think that we all have to applaud all the teachers for that alone. But going into 2021, we're doing the exact same thing. So when you look at the presentation, it says we would have to do some grade-level articulation over the summer to ensure that, say, like Joanna's team at Hawthorne in fourth grade is looking at what are our power standards? What are the things that need to be completed in this grade band to ensure articulation into fifth grade is done? And then let's map it out while we have the students for the four days, direct instruction that we're utilizing almost every second of the day. And then providing them a little bit of opportunity on Friday to take some work home with them over the weekend to be able to be set and ready to go virtually then the next week because they'll go in and out. But it's really around, we're ensuring standards are being taught. We know, I don't think there's a teacher on here that wouldn't say that we're not going to do everything in our power to ensure standards are met by the end of the year. Whether we have to deliver that in three days, four days, or five days, we'll get the standards. Whether we have to deliver that in three days, four days, or five days, we'll get the standards met. It's just the way that we'll either deliver them in a project based, where we'll give them a project to send them home with, or if we need to assess and differentiate earlier and earlier. So if we're assessing students more often to see where their deficit areas are, to be able to change the instruction. But we'll get, we will get these standards. When the students come into elementary, it will look and feel just like normal, just with 50% of the population on campus.
Yeah, I would also say too, if you think about what happens typically, you know, in a week over at any one of our schools, the amount of times where we have the assemblies and field trips, and you think of like all of those times where, you know, kids are out of the classroom, you know, and they're out quite a bit doing other things. This is going to be very traditional as far as the instructional piece. And so just from an operational perspective, when we look at how often, you know, the schedules are changed every day and kids are out doing something else, there's no difference here. But it's just, it's just a flexibility piece.
Okay, and just to clarify, Dustin, I think you touched on this already. So the Goalbooks and the Apex. Oh, yes, please, Mr. Buggbee, I'm sorry.
No worries. I think it's important to point out that you ask a lot of the same questions that the Options Committee started talking about. We did agree that at some point, we're going to have to split into primary or elementary and secondary to really nail down details. So we put together big picture plan, but now is when we start doing exactly what you're talking about, looking at all of the details of what is this going to look like.
Thank you, and I realize that all of these answers are, you know, targets and that they might be changing in the next few weeks because there's so much information that is so fluid that is affecting a lot of the decision making. So I do appreciate your candor in answering these questions, and I know that this is not set in stone. So I still want to, you know, I really want to pin this down because it's important for me to understand. So because we have enrichment at the K5s, if we were to go back to four days, would you envision continuing to have students break away from their core teacher? And let's say go to PE or to science and to Makerspace? You envision all of that being part of what the day would feel like for a K5 student? Is that what I'm understanding, Dustin?
Correct, and then we wrote each week. So if you recall, the new five days is physical education is twice with Makerspace, art, and then vocal music. So if we were to move down this path, we would have to have conversations around, like Craig was skating, maybe we remove one of the physical education days. Because one of the things that we still are receiving guidance on is how to deliver physical education. Also deliver vocal, vocal music. And so that's going to, that's going to be in consideration of those four day times. Yep.
Yes, that's the big hurdle, right? Because we keep hearing that social distancing is a big aspect of how they would like for us to operate. And yet we are challenged with these classes in the delivery just simply because they are very, they're very interactive and students, students may not understand what that feels like in this new environment. So I'm glad to hear that you are thinking of making this as normal, as positive, as possible for our students when they return in the fall and that they are to expect what they've already kind of been used to just in the prior semester and prior years. So because that will really, I think, allow them to feel like they're in a normal environment at school. So that's very positive to hear. So let me ask, I do have, let me just look at my notes here.
Can I just?
Yes, please, everybody can jump in. If there's something that I'm saying, I think it's more important for me to hear all you because you might know something that I'm missing to ask in the right form. So please, by all means, jump in.
So one of the things that was a big concern for the specialist classes as we were talking about possibly going home to back to home learning or what would distance learning look like, is the materials that they use. And so one of the conversations that we had is just a possibility is that we could make use of the Viewsonics within the school. Meaning that a science teacher could provide all of the necessary materials into that homeroom class, into that third grade class where half the students are present and could be teaching through the Viewsonics right into that classroom where it would allow for half the class to really be able to take on that hands-on role. The general ed teacher is there to support and the science teacher is doing the direct instruction of that without being exposed to 600-plus students.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Kaber, for that. Mrs. Goldstein?
Just one other thing I wanted to mention, and I think Mr. Buggbee said a little bit, but we really wanted you to understand to the committee too, that we're so different that not just like an elementary plan, a middle school plan, a high school plan, but like within elementary, like TK2 is different, a lot different than what might happen in a fourth, fifth class. So we really wanted to have some flexibility with different grade levels that it's not just a one-size-fits-all within the elementary school, that we take into consideration that a four-year-old, you know, and a 10-year-old are completely different and they have totally different needs in a classroom. So that we wanted that in place as far as an option of being flexible within our elementary.
Mrs. Valance, thank you, Mrs. Goldstein, Mrs. Valance.
Just the same thing, but like, you know, in the middle school level with the different classes. We've been, I've been talking a lot in the band world about, you know, what performances could look like and those kinds of things. So being allowed flexibility to kind of, you know, take a model, but, you know, do, make it work for each of the individual classes. And hopefully something like this would, you know, would create that for everybody.
Is there, can we get a little bit of information from each of the different grade levels or school sites on recess and lunch and how that could potentially be managed? Because I know that there's, that presents a lot of different complications at each grade level. So I'm sure you guys have talked about that.
Yeah, so I still have some questions, but I, that's a great question. So if you don't mind, Mrs. Walker Schuman, after your answer, I'd like to still, I still have like three more questions. And so, Mrs. Kaber, I think the question was directed to you. I think that's a great question. Can you help us with that?
Yeah, I think that this, I can tell you that when we met with food services, Heather said that anything that we could come up with, she could make happen. It was pretty amazing. I don't know if Wade is on the call, but she said that really anything that we need in terms of food, if she wanted things pre-ordered online or packaged. We had conversations about eating in classrooms or having certain places around campus that as soon as we hear from the guidelines, that food services is willing to make that happen. The other piece of that is that Ken Haas also basically said the exact same thing is that he has tons of resources and ideas and can make things happen for us once we know what exactly the guidelines are. Part of the, what we need to know is how many kids can be together and how many kids can be, how many kids, adults can be exposed to on a given day. That will help us in determining how we do PE, where we do PE, how that allows it to happen. But both of our elementary campuses have two PE teachers and we have about 45 students going to PE at a time. So we do have some, that's like on a normal schedule with everybody back, like this past year before pre-COVID. So if we go back and we're talking about half of the amount of students, we can probably make it feasible for each PE teacher to have no more than 10 students in PE. And where the California Healthy Youth Act did say that PE is still required, they reduced the number of minutes substantially. So we are able to see more students in smaller groups if that's a feasible option.
Okay, thank you. Actually, I had a question about lunch also, so I will ask the question. I remember that Mrs. Marcus and I recently attended a virtual meeting of some sort. There's been so many, and I remember it was the superintendent of Laco who was explaining that lunch, you know, they were, they were asking people, she mentioned, she was talking about how some schools have an incredible need to really provide meals for a lot of students in their districts. And so, you know, because they were under, at the time, and this was about two and a half weeks ago, the communication coming out of Laco was, you're going to have reduced days. And so being that the method of operation, they were encouraging everybody to still deliver food to the students, but to have students take their food with them. Their lunches would be going home with them so that they wouldn't eat at school. So are we, have we decided that we will be providing lunch then? It sounds like we are because our days are extended, right? And so the whole, the whole concern about this conversation that I was listening to was about how students, when they're taught, when they're eating lunch, they become socially involved. And that social distancing becomes again, much more difficult to guard and to make sure that students are following.
And I can answer that, it's great that we're coming up with all kinds of ideas and different ways that we can deliver the lunch. I can share with you that this is in the public health order on how and when lunch is delivered. So, you know, and as of right now, I can just share with you that, you know, it is following social distancing guidelines. And so that, which means that, you know, depending on the number of students that you have, that you may have a, you know, like a classroom, like one at a time in like a cafeteria. Somebody could be outside, somebody could be, so it is, it'll be directed by public health. But that will be in the order, and I just want you to know that, you know, that it's still in revision about how flexible we can be. Because of course, you know, the input that we provided yesterday was that social emotional piece. And how can we protect kids and our staff, but also still have them, you know, at a time where they can, you know, be talking with one another and interacting?
At the middle school level, we've already begun on the administrative team. We've already begun discussing, on a preliminary level, we lack the information that Dr. Breggy was just talking, referring to. But we've discussed staggering our lunches because we are, we won't be doing a rotating schedule this year because of the new protocols. Staggering lunches and what that looks like, one-way hallways. So making our hallways and our stairways one way across the school. So there's an upstairs and a downstairs. Anybody that went to school in New York City knows what I'm talking about because most of the schools there are that way. And really laying out across our campus, the spaces, how do we utilize all of that outdoor space? Because to, for, to provide lunch for kids. So we've already begun those preliminary conversations as an administrative team. We're just lacking the specific guidelines from the county. And once we have that, then we feel pretty comfortable that we can start working with district administration, putting that together.
And that's exactly what I would hope that all of you would be doing, and I know that you are, is because once that order is delivered, you already have options in place. You're instantly going to be able to, you know, ensure that, that we follow that when you have that type of flexibility and those types of options, whether it's lunch or whether it's choir or PE or, you know, band. And so it's, you know, all of those things, it's great that you have these options right now because once it's delivered, I know that we're going to be able to turn it around really quickly because everybody is working so hard at trying to make this to be the most adaptable plan possible.
Okay, so two final questions. The first question is very simple. I believe the answer is going to be yes, but let me just make sure because I was asked this question and I didn't want to give false information. I know that Goalbooks is, follows the guidelines of Common Core standards. Does Apex do the same, Dustin? And the second question has to do with special ed. How do you envision our special ed students who need special accommodations throughout the day to have their needs met during this process? Has that been something that you all have talked or considered? Thank you, and that'll be it.
Yep, so, yep, like you stated, President Hacker, that Goalbook is standards aligned through California Agreement of Education, and so is Apex. So where those that are viewing, you can actually go to the website and not look at the general education or curriculum. You have to select your state and then modify. So that's where it's UC-approved and NCAA-approved as well. So yes, to those two. For the accommodations in special education, our primary goal at this point was for the general education for all students. Ms. Chisholm's on the phone or on the Zoom as well. So the accommodations in special education portion, all students need access to Goalbook and Apex. From there, the case managers would work with Ms. Chisholm's department on those modifications and accommodations.
Right, that's correct, Dustin, thank you. And Mrs. Hacker, to further answer your question, it would be similar to what we've been doing during home learning, providing individual sessions, group sessions, and working through the, through the accommodations and modifications on each student's IEP as much as possible. There has been some guidance from the federal government that fate is currently, to the extent possible, during the COVID-19 shutdown or, and so we would continue to follow those guidelines. The staff has done an amazing job. I have been sitting in on different Google Hangouts and Zoom instruction sessions and the things that they're doing are amazing. So I feel very confident that we'll be able to meet everybody's needs.
Well, thank you for that, and thank you all for giving me your comments and answering some of my questions. I appreciate your time, and I'm going to defer back to the group. Dr. Breggy, before I do that, is there any, do you at this moment want to share anything that we should be looking to communicate as far as challenges, barriers that we might be encountering in the short distance?
So, sure, we do have a challenge at our high school. And so as most people know, as part of the Purple Line Extension, Metro is going to be tunneling underneath the high school. And it's, the staging area is, we're right where our portables are. And Metro has found that in their, their testing of the soils and of the area, which is required, that there are, there were three anomalies, meaning, you know, a problem that they needed to investigate before, you know, looking at the tunneling with the boring machine. Two of those anomalies are that there are oil wells that were built back in the early 1900s. And so they're not working oil wells, but nevertheless, they are oil wells that are in the way of the, where the boring machine is going to be doing some tunneling. There's going to be two 20-foot, two 22-foot tunnels that are, and there's 15 feet in between both of those. And those, that's what's tunneling through. And so in this zone is two of the oil wells that need to be abandoned appropriately. They were abandoned a long, long time ago before any of the regulatory requirements were there. And so, but now that those have been discovered, those have to be handled accordingly and appropriately and safely. And so we have asked Metro to stop what they're doing so that these oil wells can be abandoned the right way. And the state is involved. There's an organization called CalGems that is looking and working with us and with Metro to make sure that that's done accordingly. The challenge is, and I don't have the exact information now. I mean, there's definitely an issue and a problem now. But as far as resolving it, we're still seeking some more information. And I can share a little bit more next week. But you mentioned challenges, so this is a challenge for us right now because, you know, one of the biggest priorities we have is to ensure student and staff safety. And so while this is being done and we're mitigating and abandoning these wells the appropriate way, it's the area that's in the village area and the bungalows there that we cannot put students and staff there if that work is still happening. And so the challenge that we have is that we don't know exactly when they're going to finish. And that could impact the start of our school year because we could not use any portion of the village while this work is going on. So that, it adds to, Mr. Spitz had talked about how this is just, you know, just COVID-19 and what's happening is one of the biggest challenges ever in education. This is just an additional layer for us that provides another challenge at the high school as far as classroom use, because we have to make sure that this work is finished before any of the tunnel boring starts. So we So, um, we've asked them to stop, um, the, the, the wells have to be plugged accordingly. And, um, you know, we need to make sure that we don't have any risk of, uh, personal safety, operational safety. So we'll have a little bit more information, um, I can provide with you next week, Mrs. Hacker, uh, but that's kind of where we're at now. It is, it, it is a concern. I'm glad you, uh, you, you brought it up so that I could share the challenge, um, and we'll continue to provide you and the board with more information as we go forward. But that certainly does pose another challenge for August.
Thank you, Dr. Breggy. We, uh, we'll look, Mel, I see you. I'm going to go back to Mrs. Marcus and then go around one more time. Thank you, Mrs. Marcus.
Okay, well, first of all, I want to, um, reiterate the words of the members of the board, uh, that talked about the thanking the committee and the hard work that they have put into this. I don't want to repeat what they've said, so I'll just drop that and just let you know that I am very grateful and I can see all the hard work. I just want to make a comment about the teacher aspect on the day that the kids are not in school. I, as a teacher, would never find that as a loss of instructional time. Somehow you can figure out a way to make those days still count. So even though you're losing maybe minutes in the classroom, you will not be losing minutes if you use that time wisely. And I just want to repeat that because as a teacher, I would have definitely used it that way. I see Mrs. Valens shaking her head. I thank her for that. Thank you for that, uh, thank you. Um, I don't want to go into a lot, only because I, I think I've got the answers. And I, and as I say, this is so fluid and it's so in a chain. And the health department is going to have such, so much to say about this whole thing that by next Tuesday, things could be even different again. So I just wanted to say that, I just hope that the parents, by listening to us today and learning what we're trying to do and the support we're trying to give, and how we are doing this for the students and for their benefit, that they're paying attention and knowing we need their support and to give us, make sure that you know that the educators are doing the best thing they can to make the state, the students next year in school the best that it can be. And I just want to make that comment. And for that, I will now defer to the next speaker.
Mrs. Walker Schuman.
Thank you. Dr. Breggy, to, to just kind of go off of what you, um, just introduced, how many, um, portables in the village are occupied? Well, how many were prior to COVID, um, by classrooms?
So, um, and this is where I would have to get back to you, because it could be anywhere from 12 to, um, to 15. Um, you know, we did have some, uh, we did have people in that back row, the, the, that was closest to the staging area. We did, uh, we were able to, uh, work with those teachers, have them, uh, move out of there. But it, it could be 12 or 15. I want to give you a better, uh, a better answer. So I, I will, um, I was speaking to Mr. Mead, uh, just earlier, and so I want to be able to give you a better number. But I, I also, to add to the challenge though, is that, um, we have utilized, um, because we moved teachers out of that back row, um, closest to the staging area, that we, we really, uh, just adds to this challenge that is, you know, we're just shaking our head that this could possibly happen all in one school district. But, but where are we going to put students and staff, you know, if that were to occur?
Yeah, so that's really, I think that's a really important point. We are literally having two completely diametrically oppositional forces working at the same time. With COVID, we need more space and to have fewer kids in the classroom. And then with this metro situation, it's compromising our ability not only to do that, but it's, it's diminishing the amount of, of real estate that we have, um, already right now. So I think it's really important for, for parents to keep that in mind. This is a really, it's not, not something that we control, something that we simply have to react to. But unfortunately, it really compromises our ability to plan for the fall because this is something, you know, that clearly did not, did not need to happen this way. And just for, um, the public's, you know, uh, information, this is separate from Venico oil wells. These are the oil wells that really are in the, the path of the metro tunnel. This, uh, has, it's entirely separate and, um, from, from Venico. So, um, and, and these are the two that we know about. We don't know what else is in the path. So it's, it's likely that as we proceed through this year and things start to unfold, there's more that we're going to know. So it's important that everyone really stays on top of this and pays attention because these are exactly the concerns that we've been, uh, you know, trying to raise and shaking our fists about for the last nine years. Um, and student safety has to be paramount. So I just want to make sure that everybody, um, understands that. Um, and I'll just thank again everyone involved in the, uh, Options Committee. I really am, um, uh, impressed with all of the, uh, with all of the options. And I think one of the really important things we have to keep in mind as we continue through this conversation is, um, where the teachers are falling and the instructional assistants and, you know, all of our bargaining units. You know, I think we can sit here and make these plans and come up with what we think is going to be the best, but, um, we really also need to know where the teachers are going to fall, how many are going to want to come back, um, you know, that they're going to be able to commit to and see through all the precautions that the public health department determines are necessary, um, and, and then try to mix all those components together. So I really hope it's not lost on anyone, the, the absolute complicated nature of, of what it is we're trying to do here. And we're really doing our best. I think to date so far, at least from my perspective, the public's been super involved and given us a lot of really good, I, feedback and ideas, as have the, um, you know, the teachers, administrators. Um, and so I really appreciate that. I hope that continues. That's it for me.
Okay, Mr. Spitz.
Uh, yes, I, I have a, uh, a question, uh, for Dr. Breggy. Uh, hold on one second, please. I have a question for Dr. Breggy regarding process. We're, we're two months away from reopening the schools today. Um, and according to your communication with the Return to Learn Committee, their fourth and final meeting is scheduled for July 16th, which is one month before the opening. So presumably the final decision on the reopening plan will be reached sometime after that. And then after that final decision is reached, negotiations would start up with, or a MOU with the HVA. After the MOU is reached, uh, is agreed on, then the process of really preparing for the reopening can commence with communicating with parents and instructing staff and physical preparation of the schools. Completing all of that within one month after the final meeting of the, of the, uh, Return to Learn Committee seems, seems like, uh, like it would be quite challenging. And I'm, I'm wondering whether, uh, you shouldn't consider shortening the ad hoc term of that committee from one month to about one and a half weeks.
So, uh, you know, one thing about the way that the dates are set up, um, you know, and I'm, I'm glad we didn't start that committee because I was, I was actually sitting next to superintendents just yesterday, um, and going through that public, uh, health order. And, um, all the work that those committees did, right, is now, it, they have to start all over again because everything has changed since then. So I think that by spacing out the, the committee work, um, you know, and this is a very, this, this think tank is, um, you know, it, it, it's going to have to be flexible and it's going to have to be, um, you know, we're going to have to continue to look at things as things change. So, um, we may want to continue working with the think tank, um, as, as, as the order gets revised and we get closer to school. That was kind of a general, this is, let's have these sessions, let's see where we are, let's reevaluate, um, what's working on the committee. Because it's, it's basically a committee to provide ideas and recommendations. It's not, it's not a, a team that's going to be coming up with a plan, uh, but it's going to be a team that's generating ideas and thoughts from their professions to share with us, uh, those best practices and how we can work that into educational best practices. So I think that it, it could go longer, that team. I think we're going to see how the first meeting, which is tomorrow, um, how that goes. And, um, you know, I think it's going to kind of grow and evolve as some of the information changes.
Okay, and Mr. Spitz, anything else before I go to Mr. Margot?
No, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Margot.
No, I had nothing else. Thank you everyone for today.
Great, thank you. Um, I just, along the lines of what Mr. Spitz just said, I wanted just to ask, you know, what does your schedule look like as far as timeline? But I think you've answered that, Dr. Breggy. Uh, because what we want to avoid is just getting so close to the, the beginning of the school year and not have all these, um, requirements ironed out. You know, I think working with our BHTA, um, partners is, is a, is a big piece of the puzzle. So, and that takes some time sometimes. And so you probably want to...
I, I feel like, like I, I, we have the right resources, um, and there, e- even though it's going to be changing and in ongoing, I am absolutely confident that, that we will meet everything from the, the public health order. My, my worry and my concern as I sit here virtually before you is, is that what we need to get moving on is that it's, it's, we have to get a better understanding of what our parents want for their kids. And so everything, everything else, we're fine. I'm, I'm very confident in. What my, my biggest concern now is, I, I, because I think we're at a point, what, what I would like to see is that, that we are able to share with parents, uh, the, the options that we have. And to, and to get, we, we have to have people to start committing because everything's around staffing. And so, so we need to know as early as possible, uh, what it's going to look like. Because if we wait now in this area, this is, this is, this is the area, this is so important. You know, magic happens in the classroom with our teachers and with, we, we have to know who's, who's interested in what. Are you coming back virtually? Which I know several families are. And, or if you want the, the hybrid, but we have to know, we, we have to get people to commit where that is so that we can start planning. You know, as you know, like when we put a master schedule together, we start in January. Putting a master schedule together, that's our traditional every day. We, we're at a point now where we need to describe what we know with the instructional delivery options that we have and to ask parents, what are you interested in? So that we can then start to develop a staffing plan around it.
So when do you envision, um, at, at, you know, when do you anticipate asking that question to parents? And I'm, I'm sure it's going to be someone like Dustin who handles something like this. When do you envision that phase starting and finishing? Where you actually ask parents, you know, what, what, what do you want for your child?
I, I think, I think we need to get some direction from the board on a, whether that if, if you, if you like what you saw is obviously is part of the, the virtual and then, um, and then also the, the hybrid. Because what we need to do is we need to fully and clearly articulate what each option looks like. Because there is a commitment behind some of, you know, the, like the, the virtual option, if you're going to go virtual. You know, there's, there's a commitment behind. So I think we have to be really clear with parents, this is what this program looks like, and this is what the hybrid looks like. And I know that there's things that are going to change. And, and you heard from Mr. Allen and Mrs. Kaber and Mr. Bugby about, um, you're just, uh, primary, elementary, middle school, uh, that there's going to be some things that are different, like how lunch is handled, how PE is different handled. Those things, we are going to know that for, for some time. But I think that if we can get, and we can articulate what that hybrid model looks like, what the virtual model looks like, I think that if we could do that into next week, that, that we are in a place where we can ask parents what they're interested in, where do they want to be? Because then, once we collect that information, that's when we have to put our staffing plan together. And that's just, it's bigger than you could ever imagine. And I, you know, I see principals shaking their heads because the, the behind the scenes when it comes to staffing and planning is, we, we do that without a lot of people seeing. And so that, that's extremely, uh, you know, uh, time consuming. And, um, you know, and this is going to be even harder than what we've done before. So that, that's what I would like to see, Mrs. Hacker, is like, that we, that we clearly come up with a way to explain the options and then get feedback from parents. Where do you see is the most comfortable fit for your student?
So for purposes of this study session, are you looking for direction now, Dr. Breggy? Or do you want to come back to the board with something more definite? Or you tell us what you need right now?
I mean, I, because it doesn't need to be a board vote. If, if...
I know, it's just direction, just direction.
If, if the board...
Would you like me to go and ask, would you like me to ask the question, based on the presentation today and the two options, uh, virtual option and a blended option, is there support to continue down this road? Is that what you'd like the question to be?
Yes, that. And I would add on is to, um, is to put ourselves in the, in, into a registration mode so that we can start to get an idea of where people are, are going to see themselves for next year. It's, it's bigger than I could ever explain.
No, I understand.
But that's, that would be ideal if the, there, if we can get some direction to, um, to move forward with articulating, explaining what the, those options are to our parents and, and, and work with our staff to do all the fine tuning. Because there's a ton of work that we do engage our staff in as far as moving forward. It would be ideal if we could get to a point where we were able to send something out and get enrollment where parents see they're best fit for their students.
Okay, and I think I, I saw Mrs. Valens's, uh, hand go up. So, Ms. Valens, did you want to add something? And then I'll go back to you, Dr. Breggy.
Just, just really quickly, I would just wonder if, uh, you know, if we're talking about the hybrid option, I think this is maybe what Dr. Breggy was saying, but I think it's important that either we pick one or whatever, because I think maybe the two days versus the week thing might help determine parents' decision. So I think that maybe when we send that out to make our lives easier, when we get the information back, we should go with one of those as the option and not both or multiple or something.
Thank you, Ms. Valens. So yeah, so you, you did a, a better job of articulating that than I did. But it would be, we, we really do need to, it, it, at this point, I think it, we, we need a recommendation or direction for that option. Uh, because otherwise, if we start having three programs and, and then we go back and tell people, well, I'm not going to do, like, I, I really do think, and it would be my recommendation, I mean, the, the week, um, the week option, that, because we have to take into consideration that cleaning portion. Because it, we, we are, it, you know, it is our duty and responsibility to ensure that we're simply not just cleaning high-touch areas, that there's this in-depth cleaning. And I know that we, and I've talked to Ken Haas about this, like, we can develop a, a very comprehensive, and we're going to have to. Uh, and that's part of the, the think tank too, uh, is working with some of the professionals and putting together a, 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 a plan so that it's professionally clean. So that would be my recommendation. But I agree, and, and Christina did a much better job. It's, it's virtual or that week option, that A-B option.
Okay, so thank you for that. And Mrs. Gohler, I saw your hand, please.
Sorry, thank you, I've been quiet so far. Um, I, I, I just want to emphasize for those of us who are in the classroom, we really want training. We want to, uh, deliver the best kind of instruction that we can. And, um, we know that no matter what it is next year, it's going to be different than what it was two years ago. So I think I, I, I think I speak for most in as soon as we can possibly get this done, we can get to work. Although I, I think that we are probably open to any online training that you guys are willing to offer us over the summer. Everyone's here. It's a great summer to expand our repertoire. So as soon as you guys can make that decision, it would be helpful for us and ultimately helpful for your kids.
Yep.
Okay, and Mr. Allen, and then Mrs. Smith? And then anybody else before I ask a question to the board?
So I also think that it's important that, to maintain integrity of a classroom setting and the continuity of the instructional setting, that, um, parents make a commitment that if they're going to go virtual, that they stay out and they are virtual for a full semester. And so that we don't have kids coming in and out and in and out of a classroom setting, but that the semester is a nice, clean break. And then most people begin, um, kind of fresh at the second semester.
Yeah, I can see that being a very critical commitment for parents to make. Thank you, Mr. Allen, for clarifying that. And Mrs. Smith?
Yes, I was just going to mention Goalbook is really new to TKV teachers. We just heard about it several weeks ago. So I just wanted to make sure that, uh, TKV teachers were trained and prepared and really knew what was going on. And also just a reminder... And also, just a reminder to take the temperature, maybe poor choice of words, of the faculty. As far as the staff, what do they want for the coming school year and to call parents as well as staff?
Right. So there begs the question, right? That you touched on something very critical that I'm sure is weighing very heavy on the minds of every board member. As we go around to ask this question, and I do understand the opportunity and the timeline, right, is upon us to really make some decisions or give directions so that you all can get to work in a direction that the board wants you to go in. We need to know just that. And that's a question for Dustin. Do you think that GoalBooks, it is something very new to the board also? We just approved it, I think, two meetings ago. So do we have, I would assume there is an opportunity to train the teachers adequately before the start of the school year. So Dustin, is there a plan for that, if you were given the green light?
So for GoalBook, it was already, that was already purchased. And so, yes, for GoalBook for the TK through 5th grade, we are just waiting on the fiscal new school year to start, which is July 1st. So that funding comes out of that July 1st into the budget for the 2022 school year. So we will start planning with support of the I-4 coaches on offering not only virtual training for GoalBook, with GoalBook, but also looking at leveraging the first couple of days back as well. So we're going to really look at that August 12th and 13th date as well as how can we leverage those two days. For Apex, the two pieces that are part of this kind of conversation today is, one, around the Apex purchase for district license. When you look at the Independent Learning Center, we are purchasing about $8,000 worth of license, because we're buying almost individual students. Versus for $38,000, we're getting unlimited seats for 6th through 12th grade. And that includes professional development, which allows then all of our staff, 6th through 12th grade, to have exposure to the Apex system. In addition, it's ViewSonic training through MyView Board. So the video which we showed you is the capability of allowing students at home to see what's happening on the ViewSonic. That work needs to be started as well. Utilizing and leveraging not only administration, I-4 coaches, and then even some of our technology leads, to start building those courses virtually, so teachers feel comfortable using the ViewSonic and then using MyView Board, and then being able to create and run a course utilizing it. So there's a couple of steps that we need just kind of that thumbs up for, so then I can go ahead and start that work and get those dates on the calendar and provide multiple opportunities. Because people are, might travel or people might already have pre-set things in their life, and they won't be able to attend a training till August. But I want to be able to start offering those things as soon as possible.
Got it. Thank you. Mrs. Goldstein, and then we will, Dr. Bregge, I'll turn it back to you to ask the question, and we'll go around and ask the board. Is that okay? Thank you.
So just two quick things. One, as far as when the parents are given the options of what they want, if they are picking in particular a truly virtual model, I know a lot of us with our experiences of doing the last few months of school this way, parent participation is going to be key, in particular on the smaller, the younger kids. When you have kids coming to virtual class with toys in their hands, or eating their breakfast, or siblings running screaming through the room, I mean, these parents are going to have to make a commitment that they're involved, because it really affects their kids' ability to access the curriculum if they're present or if they're not. It was just a huge difference in talking to teachers of kids who are engaged and versus not engaged. And then the other point is, I know you mentioned the science teacher, if we're going to specialists during the day, the science teacher can beam in through the ViewSonic and the core teacher can have the materials there, and so that you wouldn't be in contact with all those kids. But I don't know that it was mentioned about PE, if the PE teachers are going to be coming in contact, even though they're smaller groups, there are going to be numbers of smaller groups. I know that was a big concern, from hearing from PE teachers, that they would in turn be seeing all the students, whereas maybe other specialists weren't. So I just wanted to sort of bring that to light again.
Okay, thank you so much, Mrs. Goldstein, for that. Dr. Bregge, I'll ask you to please ask the question that you're asking the board. You're asking for direction. So that, just so that we're clear, can you please phrase that for the board and the board can consider? I also want to just tell the board, if you feel that you would like more detail, we're going to meet next Tuesday, you have your right to say, hey, can we get more details as to what these plans look like? Although I'm hearing from staff that they would need time to really start pinning those details down with our direction. So I just want to be fair to the board and also offer that as an option. Thank you.
And so the question from the cabinet and myself to the board would be to see if the board was comfortable giving us direction to articulate two different models for our families. And that is the all-virtual model, and then the hybrid model that has the week, week A, week B, so that we could spend some time articulating as much as we know now to parents what that would look like, so that we can ask parents to essentially enroll. I mean, like, it's like a registration period, so that we can get that commitment. And I think what Ms. Goldstein said is really important as well, is that, you know, we need to fully explain, like, with the virtual option, what the expectations are for that option, so that parents can then make a decision on, you know, where they would like to enroll their students. That's just, that's key to us moving forward, is nailing this down. And as soon as we're able to, you know, some of these details, that we're able to know how we're going to move forward, that's when we can begin working on the MOU, which is designed to, you know, we're, we'll be looking at how this, the impact of this change is the impact, what is that impact on our teachers? And so we can begin that phase, because that is a very important phase, and we'll be doing that with all our union groups. So the sooner we decide, I think that that lessens anxiety for our parents and for our staff. And it would be great to have that board support moving forward, so that we can start the articulation process, what's available, and then have our parents register.
Okay, thank you. See, Mrs. Goller?
I'll make this very brief. We found in the classroom, I think all of the teachers on this call will agree, students who were the most successful in the class were the ones who had their cameras on. This is, I don't know the legality of that. You guys, we can't probably make them. And there are also, for some families, it's very difficult to show what's going on, but that is a message that we really need to get out there. It is best for students if their teachers can see them, just like it's best for students to be able to see us as much as possible. So I, any support that you guys can offer in that direction, or ways to help make that happen for next year would be meaningful to both teachers and kids. Even kids who don't want to be seen, it's still better for them.
Right, that's awesome feedback. It's excellent.
Okay, so we're going to, with Dr. Bregge's question in mind, we are going to start asking the board. So I'm going to start with Mrs. Marcus. Mrs. Marcus?
I would imagine, thank you very much, and I think that it's very clear, I think we also have to make sure we do a survey of the teachers also, because they are also going to have to weigh in on what they will be most comfortable with and what they will be able to do. So in addition to the parents, I didn't hear teachers in that survey, but I would imagine that that would also be included in that. I would just like to say, if you were to put that survey out today and gave the parents the option, total virtue or the one type of blended learning that I think looks really good at this point, you would probably get many parents who have already made up their minds, and they know what they want. And then there's the group of the, and they don't know for sure, they would like a little more information. So I think that if you put it out now, and you put it out with an explanation, you're going to get a lot of parents who might already have decided that. I mean, a letter that I got this morning, I already know that parent's going to go virtual, totally. It was a rather lengthy letter, and that parent, no matter what we decided today, that's a virtual parent. And that's the way some of them feel. And there are others that say they want, they know they're not all going to come back from the classroom full-time. That's a given. So they're going to have two options. So from that standpoint. And a comment that I did have, and I never mentioned it while we were talking before, was I had written, "parent support, parent support, parent support." And that was the thing that was very, very, I have it right here in my notes, and I kept saying, "It won't work if we don't have parent support," because I feel that way. So I would be in favor of putting it out there, giving the parents the choice, explaining what they are, you know, so they can see whatever way. And then you will have definite answers, one way or the other. And then they undecided, find out what they need to know, or what, maybe they'll need more information. But I think we can go forward with that survey. And not so much like a survey, like you say, an actual registration, so parents know what it's all about.
So Mrs. Marcus, just to reiterate, are you then in support of the two options that were phases? I guess that's the way they were couched, phase one and phase two? Or are you saying that you would rather have administration first have a final survey, and then you're ready to make a decision? I need to clarify.
No, I think we have to go ahead, I mean, with both. I think we have to do both. But you just took something, a thought of mine that I had, and now I, I'll think about it, and then I'll give you what I, just the thought that came to mind.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Walker Schuman?
So yes, I am in favor of going forward with the two options, the all-virtual or split-week as the two options. I absolutely think that's the best course of action. There are two things I want to add to that. I know for the kids in private school, I don't know that this is for something that we'll be able to take advantage of, but I know kids in private school, after a certain period of time, can opt out of doing PE at school and do it separately. I know at Beverly, we have kids that are on contracts that do their, like, PE or sport in the off-season separately. I wonder if that's something we can offer for the 6th through 12th graders, for parents who don't want their kids to have that much contact with other kids in that environment, if they're concerned about contact, if they'll have the option to opt out of PE at school. So that's something I do want an answer to, obviously not right now, but if you could look into that and let us know. And then I would suggest that we add to the agenda for Tuesday, the Apex contract with the unlimited licensees for the fall.
Mr. Spitz?
Well, I need a little clarification on this, if you don't mind. Are we saying that we could offer two options that would be available simultaneously to those parents, for those families that want all virtual? And for those families that prefer the A/B, the blended? Are you saying that we could offer both simultaneously?
Yes.
If half the parents wanted one, and then half the parents wanted the other, you could do that? Is that my understanding of what you're saying?
Yes, Mel, you're absolutely correct, which, that's why, that's why it's so important to get that direction, because we don't know what that number is, that it, we have to then design and create and move staff, you know, in areas where we can then support the family's choice on what's best for their students. So we can do both at the same time, simultaneously. We just need to know where people are going to be.
Okay, that's the case. Then I'm in favor of holding the families, holding the parents as soon as you're able to do it. And yeah, that would be fine with me.
Yeah.
Mr. Margot?
Does Mrs. Marcus want to finish up her thought? She just chatted that she remembered what she wanted to say, so I can defer to her for a moment.
All I was going to mention was, that's assuming that the Department of Health doesn't come in with some kind of a plan that prevents us from doing this to begin with. But to understand that this is something that we're going ahead with, but we may have our hands tied and we may not be able to do what we want to do. So that's all I was just going to point out. That's it.
Funny you should say that. I was going to say, Dr. Bregge, I guess in any notification to parents, we have to obviously have this contingent on public health. Just a disclaimer. Yeah, I support the plan. I think it's a really good idea for people to understand that the difference between the split weeks and the split days is the amount of time that we can disinfect and prepare the brick and mortar for the next cohort that comes in. And I think that's really kind of what drove me to make that decision, because I think kids would like the option of being on campus every week at some point. But it's really, the split weeks is a much better way to handle this. So I do support that. Thank you.
No, thank you. And it is, you know, it's, this wouldn't be like a survey for families, like, this is a, I just want people to know, this would be, we need to know your commitment so that we can adjust staffing. So this is like registration. This is, this is where do you see what is a best fit for your family?
Yeah, I would agree with the board in that we should get those commitments in place by surveying our families. And they should understand the commitments that they have to make. I saw Mr. shake his hand, his head.
So just for clarification, it would not be a survey, though.
Not a survey, a commitment.
Right, it's enrollment.
Enrollment.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm in favor of that, Dr. Bregge. I understand, I support both. You called them phases, I want to call them options. I like option, I like the virtual option, and I like the option for the, look, if that's the best that we can do, I mean, ideally, I think it's always an interruption to come to school and then be off for a week and then go online. It's not, it's not the most ideal way, I think, of delivering education. I think every parent, I don't want to speak for every parent, but I would assume most parents would like continuity. And so it's a little disruptive, but I guess, given the confines and the challenges that we're facing with COVID-19, there's, like Noah said, there's nothing else that, there's no other better option for us to provide at this moment. And I think it's less, you know, the prior option that you had provided was a good one, too, but it was also very limited in hours and days. Two days out of the week wasn't, I think, enough. I just thought that, but I think this is better, it's a better option. Okay, so Mel, did you have something to say? I saw your hand, and then I saw Mr. Allen. And then Mrs. Goldstein? Mel, next?
Just one quick question. And in the all-virtual option, you still have students coming together for such courses as, say, orchestra and other, you know, other musical programs and other such programs?
In the virtual option, the, some of the performance-based courses are not offered. So in our Independent Learning Center, we are unable to offer a virtual orchestra, vocal music, ceramics, those types of courses are not offered through the Apex learning. And so the answer to that question is no.
So sports, all other, all other courses that involve lab work and students working together are out? I want to, I want to change my vote and go for the blended plan with no choices.
Oh yeah, Mr. Spitz, nope. So for the virtual, lab sciences are still, because it's individualized. So the instructor isn't an orchestra instructor, so cannot teach the clarinet, but is able to teach all necessary performance required for, and I'm going to say this, A, B, C, and D through the A through G, for math, science, English, and social studies. studies, so all that will be tackled in the virtual learning, even world language will be part of that virtual learning as well, and all students in the virtual learning do have, because of independent study, rules and regulations through California Department of Education, can participate in sports if we are allowed to run after-school athletics. So we're following independent study rules and regulations.
Okay, so I just want to be, I just want to be sure that when the information goes out to parents, that they know that all virtue, what the limitations of all virtue plan will be.
And so, Mrs. Hacker, a step away, oh, she's back now, I know that, Annette, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just, gosh, I suddenly forgot what it was, oh, yeah, when you do the commitment from the parents, I think you also need to talk about the teachers and their commitment, because that's going to be, really impact your staffing, you really got to know who's willing to come back and who's not.
And let me just say, and this is unpopular, but I just have to say it, I mean, it is more that, you know, and I know that this is what you mean, but it's more than just, you know, if you want to come back, I mean, it's, it's not a choice on whether you want to come back, I mean, we're essential workers, and so, you know, if there is a, under COVID-19's, you know, umbrella, that you cannot come back, that that's the difference, so it's not to, you know, if you want to, it's, it's, there's got to be a reason why somebody, and it's not just teachers, it's anybody, you know, what, who's not going to be back.
Okay, Mr. Allen?
One of the things that we kind of need to think about is a default, is there a default when we are asking parents to register, if parents don't respond, are we going to default them into one of the two programs, because there's definitely going to be some parents who don't respond, and we want to make sure that we list in there in some way, shape, or form, anyone that doesn't is automatically defaulted to this program, because then...
Wait, Mr. Allen, are you telling me that we have parents who don't respond?
No, that doesn't happen, that's another district I'm actually talking about, but...
You're right.
It's just because, because when we're really talking about staffing, then that's going to be really critical, that we have that number as concrete as possible.
Great, okay, Mr. Seaman?
Yeah, and it would be, that's a great point, Mr. Allen, and just so we're all clear, we would default to phase two or option two, which is the blended learning.
Okay, wow. Yeah, although I would, you know, every year, you know, our staff does such a great job at getting people to return the information, I mean, I do know that sometimes a personal phone call has to be made just to get it, but I do think we need to get it, because I think that this is, but I think that our parents are at a place right now where they're ready to do this, and I think that if, when we send it out, I think it wouldn't be shocking to me that, you know, most parents would return that immediately.
Thank you, okay, so, Dr. Bregy, do you feel like you have direction from the board? I think you do.
I do, thank you very much.
Okay, Dustin, anything else that's bothering you, or, yeah, you're good, you're happy? Okay, anybody else, anything that we didn't touch on that you'd like to share with the board, we encourage you to take this opportunity to do so, because anything that you have to say to us is very helpful. Mrs. Goldstein, I knew you, Ms. Goldstein, I knew what you were talking about.
I have a big mouth. The recording issue is something that a lot of teachers are curious about, as far as consent to be recorded and that type of thing, I think that definitely needs to be addressed if we are doing this virtual learning, what the legalities of that are, that's something that I don't think was mentioned, but I know it's a big topic around teachers.
Yeah, and we did handle that in the Home Learning Plan 2.0, so we would, you know, that would fall under that, but also, you know, that's why through, you know, through administration and through, I mean, if things happen where, you know, something inappropriate is happening, that, then we handle that on a case-by-case manner, but I know that that is a very significant issue, and so we'll absolutely take care of that.
Mr. Allen, did you have something to say? No, okay, anybody else? Thank you for that, Mrs. Goldstein, that's good feedback for us, and as Dr. Bregy mentioned, I think they're aware of that, and they were able to work it out last time. Okay, well, I think this was good for all of us and helpful, and, you know, I think Mrs. Marcus said it best, you know, we need parent support as we move forward in these very challenging times, I think we're all trying our best here, and we're all partners at the table, so, so I just really want to stress that, underline that, and thank you, Dustin and the group, for your comments, I think it was a very collaborative, as Noah said, effort today, thank you. Anything else, Dr. Bregy? No? Thank you all, have a good day, thank you for today, bye-bye. Thanks, everybody.